My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you?
No modifications to the agenda this morning.
None?
Not that I'm aware of.
I believe Supervisor Fennell wants to talk about Brysland Road, number...
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So we will pull C-13 to discuss about her road. All right. Any public comment on the consent?
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the modification.
Second.
Still want public comment.
Be careful what you wish for. I did, I did want to point out something, you know, Estelle, especially last time, we had a conversation here regarding meetings that might not need to happen, and this is the one. I call it a 12-minute meeting. There's four topics I can talk on for three minutes, and it's the shortest, but I did speak to the people in the audience, and I've talked to other people. There wasn't anything on this agenda we couldn't have, if they knew this meeting wasn't going to happen, had on last minute, last time's agenda, or on the 10th. And my understanding is that is our next meeting. So we're going dark for two meetings, if my calendar is correct, that I had from last year.
It's wrong.
My calendar's wrong?
Sorry.
So we're going to have one on the 3rd, or the 5th Tuesday?
I'm going to be, I'm, I'm going to be here next Tuesday.
Okay, if you're going to be here, I'll be here then.
I'm not going to be here next Tuesday.
You're not going to be here next...
No.
Rex!
Don't give me a line like that. Anyway, go ahead.
Your credibility is just kind of going through the, you know...
I'm going to burn the street.
...floor right here. There you go. Burn that bridge.
Watch this, folks. I'm going to burn this three minutes up.
Okay. And he's darn good at it, too. I, I did, I did want to point that out, basically, that, you know, there are meetings that we could, could get along without, and I did want to make a mention, since I'm here and I have a little bit of time left, that Rex didn't burn up of my three minutes. There is something on here regarding $60,000, I think it is, for the Ferndale Veterans Building. And I've had quite a bit of angst for quite a while with the fact that a contract we have, and my understanding is something's happening a little bit down there on the one in Soham, but a contract that I did a public records request on, and of course, the people are having concerns, it's been three years, they haven't had what was promised them and what was actually in a contract. And I did the public records request, that's why I got a call, Kent, and I said, yes, I'm still willing to go ahead and move forward with seeing that not only after three years that you get the ability to have, have something to function as you did before, but the income that the veterans have lost be made whole. And so I just thought I'd let everybody know, that's been a major concern to me. I have the back of the small people, the veterans, they don't have any money to litigate things, and sometimes it's unfortunate, but that's what it takes. And I'm hoping that's not what it's going to take this time, that they will get a facility, they will get reached out to, not just some little room where they can meet, but this was their meeting place. This is the contract we had, and contracts should be adhered to. So I highly recommend that, Estelle's working on things, try and make these people happy, and try and make them whole. It's probably not much they made a year, a little bit, but the service they provided and the lack of the facility they had down there has been really missed in the community. So thank you for this part of my 12 minutes, Rex, and you only got me for 15 seconds.
I tried. Anybody else? It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. And we do have a proclamation from Supervisor Madrone. Is somebody here?
Winchell's here, yes.
Okay.
Okay, this is a proclamation on homelessness and hunger, and I'm going to go ahead and read it, and then perhaps you could come up, Winchell, and give us a few comments on it. Whereas people from all walks of life, including families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, youth, and individuals are impacted by hunger and homelessness, and whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Humboldt County, and whereas no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head, and whereas the aim of the National Coalition for Homelessness is and always will be to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, and whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable health care, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night, and whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for extremely low and low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless and hungry. And whereas hunger is a daily experience for many people in Humboldt County, with more than 40% of low-income adults experiencing food insecurity, over 17% of seniors, and 28% of children living in poverty, which more than doubles to 57% if the household is led by a single mother. And whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County Food Assessment that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity, while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck, and whereas more than one in six Americans said they, there had been times over the last 12 months that they did not have enough money to buy food that they or their families needed, and whereas National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week calls attention to the plight of the homelessness and hunger and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems. Now therefore be it proclaimed that November 16th through the 24th, 2019, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And hopefully we'll be keeping this in mind all the time, not just this week. So with that, I'll present this to...
It's already approved. My name is Winchell Dillenbeck. I am a resident of McKinleville, and I am a member of the Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. I thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. It has been almost two years since the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution for the shelter crisis with no clear results of solving the problem in Humboldt County. AHA supports the following recommendations of the grand jury. The Board of Supervisors update the resolution, creating the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee to clarify its responsibilities are to address both affordable housing and immediate sheltering. The Board of Supervisors provide an ongoing funding source for the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee, and that the Board of Supervisors expand the role of the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee to more fully include recommending non-brick-and-mortar projects that include safe parking, sanctioned camps, and tiny house villages. I will let you know that I have attended the Housing Trust Fund and Homeless Solutions Committee more than some of the members. I have also recognized that there has been no dialogue between this committee and the Board of Supervisors. So I urge, two years later, that you move forward, because it is obvious that we cannot build enough affordable housing, and we must find the short-term solutions for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we will go to items pulled from consent, number 13, ratification of local emergency proclamation for Brysland Road.
Thank you very much, Sheriff Bone. I have asked both the Sheriff Hansel and Director Mattson to give us an idea of where we are in this project, and it's, I know there's been a lot of attention to it. It affects thousands of travelers, it affects emergency response personnel, and so the sheriff had declared last week a state of emergency when we discovered this catastrophic failure on the Bryson Road, and that's being ratified today. Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you, Supervisor Fennell. Yes, last week, Public Works Director Tom Mattson approached me and let me know about a catastrophic failure on Bryson Thorne Road at mile marker, around mile marker 11.2, and this is in the John B. Dewitt Redwood, Cal, California State Natural Reserve Park. So it's a responsibility of the state park to fix the road, but the bypass affects county roads. And so Tom talked to me about the bypass and everything that's going to be affected for it, and he said that this is definitely an emergency-type situation. So I'd like to turn it over to Tom, who's got a presentation that will talk to you about the issues that we're dealing with and the timelines.
Thank you, Sheriff. And once we've heard from Tom, I would like you to address also what the plans are for emergency response while they're using the detour, because that's been on a lot of people's minds.
Absolutely. So the unfortunate part about the detour is we're, we're talking with the Public Works staff, and there is no immediate workaround. We're going to have to take the bypass like everyone else. We don't have resources staged on the other side, and so priority will be given to law enforcement and first responders, and so we will get right through onto the bypass, but this is going to be something that will affect public safety in general, and we'll do our best to communicate with the workers that are there repairing the roadway, and we can pass by the construction scene, we will do that, but when the road is completely shut down, we will have to take that bypass.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Yeah.
Director Mattson.
Good morning, Sheriff Bone, members of the board. Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. First, I want to thank our sheriff for declaring the emergency. We have been working on Old Bryson Road as the alternative since the declaration. It is getting close to being ready to be open. We are still targeting about November 20th. Once we are ready, then we will work with state parks to immediately begin construction of hopefully replacing the culvert. I did condense down the walkthrough of the culvert to a two-minute short video, so people can really see what is going inside underneath the road and how bad it is and why we are doing this. We are looking again at all alternatives, including possible by, other bypasses for emergency services, but it, this is a very fluid and fast-moving project, because it is within the state park. They have asked for the county's help, and we are working on an interagency agreement. In fact, we've already done the plans for the project, as well as a survey, and did the camera video, and we're getting ready to hire a contractor to work with their maintenance forces to get this done. We are fighting the weather. It is, it is coming, and it is coming quick, and there's about 3,500 cubic yards of material that needs to come out and go back in after the culvert, and the culvert is 38 feet deep. So without further ado, if you would play the, the video real quickly, please. Thank you.
This is November 2nd, 2019. We're at a 30-inch corrugated metal pipe in Brysland Road. We have right at the entrance here. We have a void. So from four to six, the pipe, there's a void. It's also offset. You can see. And it's deformed. We'll keep walking. We got a large void right here. It's about a two-foot deep void. Goes from four to six. Looks like about three feet wide down below. You can see the outlet, or the inlet on the other side. Looks to be about 75 feet under your feet. So the whole pipe is, the whole pipe is 30 inches, and then from the, there's about an 18-inch opening. The pipe gets crushed down, and folds right up to the debris. Here, at 6 o'clock, I'm going to scoot on in, try to get a look through this opening. Down the street. All right, so we got a little bit of debris and standing water, probably about 10 feet away. And I'm going to zoom in here. There you go. You can see the pipe right there gets crushed down, and it looks offset, and that's probably about 30 feet away. That's where I was at before, in the previous videos.
So as you can see, the pipe is in very bad shape. I frankly want to say that's not a job I would like to have. I don't think the contractor pays that employee enough to crawl in that pipe. But the fear is that the pipe collapses in winter, not only does it create an immediate safety hazard, the road could be closed for an extended period of time, and by jumping now and moving now and helping with state parks, we can control that and get it in and out of there in as short as possible period, but it is going to impact several thousand people a day. We are going to have to have 24/7 pilot car control traffic on Old Brysland Road, because significant parts of it are one lane. We will be running traffic both ways, because there are places to pull off and the other line through, but right now we're letting people know, you can probably expect about 40-minute delays. So that is our situation. Thank you.
So if I might, Director Mattson, one of the issues had been that the Old Bryson Road was really a difficult one to, to get across, a dirt road, and you've done a tremendous amount of work on it at this point, so I think people should be aware that it will be a lot safer than they think to get across there, but they'll just have to follow the pilot car.
Yes, we've been grading and paving for, basically, since we found out about this in the beginning of November, that we would need to go to a closure for state parks to, to replace that culvert.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would that move ratification of the emergency declaration?
Second. Tom, just so people understand, how many, and this is a state culvert, I understand, but how many, just so people understand what the battle we have, how many culverts is, are, does the county of Humboldt responsible for?
My educated guess is around 10,000.
And we have some that are in that same position, so...
Yeah, we have another one over in the Autopoint area, and we have Wilder Ridge, we have, they're all over the place.
There's 10,000, they're all over.
But this one actually, if it collapses, isolates that many people.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just want to note that the main concern here is we have a lot of culverts with rusted-out bottoms that last a long time. This one, you can see, is starting to get offset, and you can see the top collapsing, and that gives an indication that imminent failure is possible, and that's why we are so concerned.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thanks to you and Sheriff. Public comment?
Good catch. Stitch in time saves nine. I mean, this is, this is what qualified and competent staff do for the county, rather than going through the catastrophe that's going to happen. There's been a speaker here before related to the cannabis business, and it's been quite hard on Mr. Mattson's department regarding culverts. And I, I think there's angst, because this individual had to replace culverts because of his marijuana or his cannabis grow. But I did want to point out that with the budget they have, and what the county's doing here, this is a fine example of why this person should not be coming in here and complaining about the 10,000 culverts that the county has to maintain. And when he first started showing the video, I said, hey, as a contractor, I'd just go ahead and pour 30 yards of concrete in there and have the bottom, but no, that's not going to work. It was not that kind of a deal. And also having, I, back when I was skinny, I think a 24-inch, I had to go 150 feet down to do something down there. It's no fun to be in there, and it is dangerous. So hopefully Mother Nature will hold off for a little while. I also wanted to shout out to, hopefully, we have our local contractors benefiting from this kind of project. We have a lot of qualified people in this area capable of doing these kind of projects. We're so fortunate to have both Mr. Mattson and his staff that can put this together in a timely manner, and then the local workforce hopefully to accomplish the goal. So we'll all keep our fingers crossed in the meantime, and hopefully, hopefully, we will always have funding to take care of the other ones on your list there before they reach this same stage. We hate to see these catastrophic failures. I know there is FEMA money sometimes at the end of the tunnel, but that's not the best way to go for the constituents and for, and for everybody involved. So good job. I really want to shout out to your Public Works and all those involved, and, and like we say, hopefully the parks will appreciate us being willing to take care of something that's their responsibility, that should there be liability on a project of this nature, maybe transferred over to the state. So great partnership. Thank you.
Seeing Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions. Did I hear right that it was a 30-inch diameter culvert? And I'm finding it hard to understand how they could walk in there if it was a 30-inch.
They were crawling.
He, basically, the individual is like a, body shaped like a horse rider.
So it is a 30-inch culvert?
It is a 30-inch culvert, and he's gone into much smaller culverts than that as well. That's what he does for a living.
Seems unusual for a multiplate for a 30-inch, but any rate, that's what it looked like, a multiplate.
Yeah.
Was there a sleeve inside there as well? It looked like somebody had stuck a sleeve in it after a while.
No, that's where it's offset.
Okay, okay, that's just an offset on that.
Yeah, that's where it's separated and offset.
And this is all state parks' responsibility, the culvert?
Yeah.
What about the cost for the detour now that we got pushed into, close to the rains, rather than state parks having a good inventory process of identifying this back in the summer, when it would have been far more convenient?
We are asking, in our interagency agreement, we are proposing that they help us with at least the traffic control, because that's the biggest, going to be the biggest cost, especially if it goes, it's, it's roughly $20,000 a day for the traffic control. That's our biggest worry, fixing the road itself. That's, it's a county road, and I've got no problem fixing a county road when we need to. It is the detour, it always has been the detour.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Can I, just one more thing?
Please.
Just because I'm getting a lot of calls about this, Director Mattson, people want to know, are they going to get, what kind of notice are they going to get when the road actually closes and the detour goes into work?
Well, we've been telling everybody from the get-go, November 20th is our target date, and that is still our target date. If that changes, I will let you know as soon as I find out. We've been meeting with the parks on almost a daily basis, and we will be meeting with them again this afternoon, as we've done, gone through the, and gotten the design ready and, and moving forward with permitting. So as soon as we know, we will let people know, but the target from day one has been, we want to be finished with Old Bryson Road by November 20th, to give us time to rip this out before we get in the middle of a rainstorm.
Thank you.
Any chance of just getting a couple of signboards down there saying, "November 20th is the target date, subject to change," and then it can update for the thousands of people?
We can certainly do that.
I think that'd probably be the easiest, and it might save her phone and everything else, so, and then they'll see it every day, and they'll have an idea. All right, it's been moved in second. On the ratification, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thankful to whoever it is that discovered this.
All right. All right, now we are going to Supervisor Bass on Humboldt County Entrepreneurial Local Business Day Crab Festival.
Right after public comment.
Oh, public comment on non-agenda items. You're right, sorry. I tried, save us three minutes.
How'd that work for you, Rex?
Got caught.
Well, I'm going to give you a real quick update of, of what I'm up to here, a few things. I'll be going to Mexico most likely for three weeks in February and three weeks in March. You guys can run amok, just, your meetings will be way shorter, at least 21 minutes on the average. Forming a Mexican corporation, doing acquisitions down there, it looks like, in a beautiful little place called Keno. I did want to bring forward something that's been an angst for me for a long time, and recently we had an episode in McKinleville, I think it was a school board meeting where the student was very irritated, because everybody was up there eating M&amp;M's during the meeting and not paying attention. So some of these things, I hopefully will be brought forward. I know Virginia and Supervisor Madrone are working on, on your ethics and things. My mother always said, if you're going to eat in front of somebody, you know, share it. I highly recommend that you have a policy where people don't eat M&amp;M's like Rex is doing right now.
It's a pastime.
No M&amp;M's? Okay, nuts. Anyway, it's just part of a consideration thing. The other thing I always had a great amount of angst with, this is the only forum I know where, when Ryan Sundberg used to sit here, he was always communicating over with the county administrative officer, and that is not appropriate for an open meeting. To do this, everything that's set up here by you folks should be open mic. I've talked to people in the legal profession who agree that's part of open public meeting, transparency, so you want to have that. The other thing is, when notes are passed across here, those become public documents, and I will be making public records requests to see what they are. There's processes, procedures, you know, there needs to be a firewall, no chit-chatting up there amongst people is even inappropriate. Everything is supposed to be, well, chairperson, this. I guess if you want to adjourn from the room and have a private conversation, you can do that, if you feel there's something that would be in conflict, but openness and transparency is required in this forum, as is shown in all the other forums I go to. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. Hopefully that will be reflected. I'm going to have all kinds of topics while we're hitting on the next meetings here. You have your meetings. One of the biggest topics we're going to have here, probably on the 10th, unless there's another meeting that I don't know about, is going to be the Terrigen Project. So I, I will go over that one in quite a bit of extensiveness. I have a problem with a lot of projects that you run through here that seem to be based by greed and not consideration for Mother Nature's best interest. So we will get into details on that one in the near future, and I guess on the 10th. There will be all, all kinds of other projects. I wanted you, you know, there's certain perception out there that certain people to get in certain positions, such as Coastal Commission have a commitment to the governor, and that vote may be swayed by that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Seeing no one else. Back to Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Do you want to invite both our library director, Nick Wilsec up here, as well as Scott Adair from Economic Development? Sorry if I'm laughing, you'll see why soon. You know, I think Humboldt County is well-known for our entrepreneurial spirit, you know, and has been for years, and now more than ever, so many of our businesses...
It's just turned into a kinetic sculpture race.
I know, it is. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of folks who are, have the spirit, but sometimes it's not so easy to get there, and so sometimes they need the resources. So as you can see, Economic Development and the library are teaming together. I'm disappointed we don't have our own hats, so like, and this will reflect later, but glad to have you here today. I'll read this proclamation and hear about the crab festival, or the crab event, whatever we want to call it. And there's no crab involved, actually. Okay. Just want to make that clear.
There's a lot of them right now.
A bunch of crabby participants? Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Humboldt. Whereas the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors has identified a resilient and thriving economy as a county strategic priority, and whereas a thriving economy is integral to the ongoing health of a community, and whereas local entrepreneurism and local business are recognized as vital community assets, and whereas Humboldt County Economic Development and Humboldt County Library have partnered with the Eureka Chamber of Commerce and North Coast Small Business Development Center, who are not here wearing crab hats, to work to, to work towards common solutions, and whereas the CRAB, C-R-A-B, Fair, Community Resources and Access for Businesses, has been created to foster opportunities and collaboration, and whereas the CRAB Fair will host workshops, exhibitors, and panel discussions in support of local entrepreneurism, and whereas Global Entrepreneurs Week is the third week in November. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Saturday, November 16th, 2019, is Humboldt County Entrepreneurs and Local Business Day. County Entrepreneurs and Local Business Day. And I move the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. Would, would one of you guys share your hat with her for the picture? Just, please.
She made, she, we'll get the third hat. She made the request, go get it for God's sakes. When somebody, when somebody makes a wish, I like to sit up here and fulfill it. I'm gonna work on Winchell's next, but right now I got a crab hat, I can take care of Winchell.
She talked way into that one.
You guys are gonna wear these for the rest of the meeting? Thank you. Actually, it looks good on you, Virginia.
Hey, you guys, turn around.
You've got the good side now.
Okay, good.
I can guarantee you right now, the only thing going through Virginia's mind, does this match my outfit?
I'm wearing the red jacket. There we go. Thank you.
I'm trying to, no, no, keep it on for the rest of the meeting. I'm trying to think what the tarsalamic acid level is on you three.
Okay, so, thank you all for the time. Thank you to Supervisor Bass for being so helpful with this project and sponsoring the proclamation and being invested enough to wear a hat for us. We appreciate that.
I've always been told I was crabby at times, so.
Anyway, I just wanted to kind of reiterate a little of the proclamation that the library is looking for ways to get into the community more, that we can support the county's strategic priorities more. So Scott and I partnered up with this idea to do what's essentially a business expo at the library. That will be this upcoming Saturday. It's gonna be library-wide, the proclamation said. There will be classes, panels, networking opportunities. So, I have invitations for all of you. Can I leave them with Ryan here? Thank you so much. And again, just really thank you all for the time. Let me come up here for a minute and I hope that all of you can make it out to the crab fair on this upcoming Saturday. And let me say too, that largely, I just really love acronyms and so, that has a whole lot to do with it right there. And I'm gonna turn it over to Scott Adair just for a minute here.
Hello, supervisors. Again, just want to reiterate thank you and gratitude to Virginia. Supervisor Bass was very helpful and instrumental in the success as we put the framework together for this event, so thank you, Virginia. And yes, as Nick stated, you know, our county departments and other county departments are just looking for ways that we can collaborate and work together to, to roll forward and advance your strategic framework. And we wanted to do so in a way that also was sort of fun and goofy and embodied the kind of silly fun spirit of Humboldt County. So we're really excited about this event and we've got a couple of good keynote speakers and panels. We have a competition at the end of the event that will culminate in the Crab Trap, which is our version of Shark Tank, and we'll be giving away a prize to the winning business pitch at the end. So, thank you very much.
And real quick, just as a quick add-on, I wanted to give a whole lot of credit and thank you to Corinne Balkovic. She is back here, if you would give us a wave, thank you. Did a ton of work organizing this project, so thank you all very much.
All right. Thanks, guys. Open this up for public comment.
There's circumstantial evidence those acronyms are coming from Scott Adair. Seems to be the common thread on all those. This is a great thing. I get along with a lot of the business people and I wanted to do a shout-out for somebody who's a prime example of someone who can make a job for themselves, and this is what it's all about, a very successful job. And his name is Ready and he's up there in Willow Creek and I think it's Bigfoot Saw. And if you ever have a chance to go into a small shop, you'll meet one of the best business people I've ever met. He gives away more small things, takes more things to people's house, takes the time to educate and explain people that very few business people do. Does an excellent job, in fact, during, he used to work for another business here and during the wintertime, he'd put together, we call them Frankensteins for me, a chainsaw made out of three chainsaws. I have a rotor tiller, he said that rotor tiller, because it's made out of three different rotators, was in more pot gardens in Humboldt County than any rotor tiller around. Very interesting businessman and I want to do a shout-out to him. If you have a chance to do business with an individual up there, highly recommend you take the opportunity. He ends up servicing a lot of things that he doesn't sell, that's rare, and during these blackouts and things like this, phenomenal thing. Now I did want to make a comment on the crab thing here. Our crab fishermen are having a real problem here and they need our support in every way, shape, or form. There was a whale that died unfortunately out here on the beach. It was entangled in crab gear. Why did that whale die? Well, there was litigation that precluded the crab fishermen from removing their pots or to participate in after-the-season removal where they had a bounty to get those pots. They were not allowed to pull those pots. So sometimes there's unintended consequences with litigation that sounds like it's the best interest thing. I saw a second whale that died and washed up on the beach up here locally. Didn't have any pots around it, maybe that was part of it, but we really need to have the back of our local crab fishermen, especially now that they have litigation that doesn't fit to them locally here. And this is an important part of our economy. These are the people who've made their own jobs and they go out there and risk their lives so that we can have those wonderful crustaceans and they need our help. So whatever you guys can do to reach out to the people that are in that business and find ways to help them, find ways to get the state to understand we're not part of the problem. The biggest death that we had for whales was killed by a Noah boat. Ran over it and killed it. You can go ahead and verify that online. So sometimes, again, there's unintended consequences as far as the deaths go, but it's not our crab fisherman's fault and this is just the tip of the iceberg. Our fishermen could be next, they could be regulated right out of business. We need to help all of our local people in that business. And I do like my crabs during crab season, so hopefully we'll have one soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I just wanted to comment, I gotta run here for, I got a flight, but I'll watch the presentation from Connie and her staff when it comes online. Thank you.
You're hoping for the flight.
We have a department report from the DHHS, Helping Humboldt, an occupational empowerment program. Ms. Connie Beck, Connie, and crew? We'll bring more chairs in if you guys all want to sit down up here.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm just gonna introduce this item and then I'm gonna let the experts talk. We've been doing this program since 2018. It's been a little over a year now, so we thought it was a good opportunity to bring it back and just share with you and the community the really great work that's happening. I'm really proud of all of the staff that are here that do the work and I know I'd share a monthly report with you, but I think this makes it more real when you get to meet the staff and, and see the work that's happening. So, thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Good morning, I'm Connie Lorenzo, the Senior Program Manager for the Employment, oh, is this not on?
Okay, how's that? Connie Lorenzo, Senior Program Manager for the Employment and Training Division of the Department of Health and Human Services. I want to thank the board for providing this opportunity for us to present the status of the Helping Humboldt program at its first year anniversary. Before we go into more detail about Helping Humboldt, I would like to do a quick overview of the Employment Training Division, which I'll refer to as ETD hereafter, so you can see how this program fits into our employment services overall. Let's see if I can get that. Oops, I gotta line it up there, it looks like. Okay. ETD is located on the DHHS Costa Campus, embedded with many of the department's benefit programs that we serve. ETD serves clients from CalWorks Welfare to Work, General Relief, Transitional Age Youth, and Justice Involved Individuals from probation and the jail. ETD is a good example of consolidation and inter-divisional collaboration that by design economizes funds and centralizes employment services for DHHS. So this meets one of the board's strategic initiatives and, and goals. We provide our services in four key ways, if you'll look at the slide. One of these is through our Employment Resource Center that houses computers and classrooms. Staff in this center help clients in any way needed to find work. Workshops, individual career counseling, and client case management are provided. We also have a business service unit. This team supports local employers and matches our job seekers to their needs. ETD continues to provide the Humboldt Second Chance Program for individuals released from prison, jail, and/or still on probation. This program addresses the unique circumstances and helps participants back to work with work readiness training, vocational skills, and job search assistance. One of our funding streams is CalFresh Employment and Training dollars available to serve any CalFresh recipient. It is this revenue stream that largely funds the Helping Humboldt program. Over the last program year, ETD served approximately 1,200 clients. Our outcomes for the division at large are as follows. A 70% completion rate for mandated employment activities, 80 employers served, 135 or 134 subsidized wage placements, and 243 clients entered employment. Moving now to a focus on Helping Humboldt, the program began in August 2018. Helping Humboldt is designed to improve the employability of DHHS customers with the most significant barriers to work. The program provides coaching and proper work behaviors, ethics, and vocational skills through daily hands-on work assignments. Participants spend the morning at various jobs and the afternoons in assisted job search. What's made the program so successful this first year is the staff. I've brought the Helping Humboldt team here today. They include two work crew leaders, Julian Lennon and Noah Urban, vocational counselors, Steve Brackenbury and Jean Childs. Raise your hand. And our program coordinator, Melissa Ferby. Melissa will share with you more about the daily activities of the program.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm really happy to be here and share with you a little bit more about the program. I have been with Helping Humboldt since its inception, a year ago, a little over a year ago. And really, like Connie mentioned, there are two concrete aspects to this program primarily. One is that the, the day work program where folks work in the morning and then in the afternoon time, they are, they go to our Employment Resource Center, which is a computer lab where they work on job search readiness skills. We also offer, two times a week, a job readiness and retention workshop where we really focus on soft skill development, different kinds of workplace scenarios that they might talk about, about what it's like to be in work and how to deal with difficult situations. And we also have, that we've been offering nearly since the beginning of the program, a Feedback Friday is what we call it. And all of us staff, myself included, and all, and all of our participants get together on Fridays and we really allow for them an opportunity to share about good things that have happened in the week, maybe interviews, job applications turned in, but also opportunities to let us know what's not working for them, what, what might we need to change up. And so what I find that that really adds is it builds a buy-in for people to really feel like they have some aspect of, of control over what, what goes on in the program that they're such a big part of. And in our computer lab as well, we also offer opportunities for basic education, GED, and so forth. And we have computer classes as well.
We wanted to bring participants to you today, but the successful participants are all worky, they're not able to come from work. So we put together a quick video, we had queued up a few people to do this, but the power outage has left us with just the ability to get one done. But let me run this for you and it's an example of a client and their experience.
My name's Selena Ray, I work with Pacific Seafood and I'm a breaker. So I can go work and then the leak, the water just come, they come down on the line and then we grab them off the line and we break them all apart. My name is Stephanie Waterworth, I'm the Human Resources Manager at Pacific Seafood. We started meeting with folks that were just stepping back into the workforce and so that's how I ended up, I'm Selena.
I came from like, a really hard life of drugs and I just thought I'd want to do better for my soul. The first day of Helping Humboldt was a little hard. I think my attitude was rather crappy. I wasn't quite used to it and Helping Humboldt was, they're just there. I never had a resume or anything else like that and I didn't even know how to make one. And by the time I was done there, I have a resume, I learned how to make one, I learned to enjoy it helping people, you know what I mean? Just to help them, helping out so much.
That's what Waterworth, I mean, she's, she's, she's writing and, and everything she's doing, you know, so it's definitely made a big difference in her life. I'm, I'm excited to watch her blossom and grow even more.
I definitely believe that people do have a second chance and this program, Helping Humboldt, has really given us a second chance.
So I think that was a good testimonial, that's similar to what we are seeing with a lot of the clients. I've asked Julian, one of our work crew leaders, to share some of the stories from the daily work crew and his experience. Julian?
My name is Julian and I, along with my coworker Noah, were the work crew leaders for Helping Humboldt. We run the daily work crew program that goes out to various county and community project sites where I have reached out and made relationships with a lot of our local nonprofit organizations. On our participants' first day, we get them at their rawest. They're real, they're real sensitive about being there and many of them are unsure about the, what to expect and are maybe scared or intimidated or skeptical about being in Helping Humboldt in the beginning. Some folks come with some skills and work experience, but we have some that have never worked a day in their lives. Noah and I create a safe and positive work environment and I think that's real important because if you're, if you're, if you don't, if you're not comfortable where you're at, it's really hard to grow and that's kind of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to foster growth within these folks. We work side-by-side with them, we model positive attitudes, strong work ethic, honesty, and personal integrity, which a lot of, some of these folks need some help with, some of them not so much. A lot of these folks come from the streets and they've never had the opportunity to see what the basic fundamentals of professionalism look like and that's kind of what Noah and I are here to help foster in them. We encourage and praise good work and we coach folks daily and we offer constructive feedback where improvement is needed, for sure. The daily work crew models, the daily work crew model builds participant stamina for work, but most importantly, rebuilds their confidence as their work, work skills and attitude improve. Some examples of these, I would like to share, a couple stories, a couple success stories, and the names have been changed to protect the innocent. So, when Kevin came to us as an ex-offender, he was loud, disruptive, always, he's the kind of guy who always had to get the last word in. He spent some time with us and then he saw what our program was about, how we do things, and he finally bought in. And when he did that, his, his behavior changed dramatically. He became a vocal leader on our crew, encouraging, encouraging his teammates and holding them accountable for a lot of the guidelines that he was not very long ago bucking up and bucking- that he was not very long ago bucking up and bucking up against himself. Now Kevin has a car. He's written a three-bedroom house in Arcata with his girlfriend and he's, he works at PPG Paint, Paint Supply and he's a, he's a sales associate there. And all these, this vocalism and this, his energy is really helping him with, in that position. It's good, it's nice to see. Shawna, she was mistrustful, withdrawn, and disinterested in being in the program. And again, after she was with us for a while, she began to feel like she was in a safe place. And so she opened up and her true colors really started coming out. She began showing initiative, volunteering for tasks on projects without me even having to ask her to do things. And she offered some great ideas for streamlining the process of putting together about 1,500 county emergency packets. And that was a, that was a logistical nightmare, putting that thing together. There's a lot of work in pieces in that thing. So she said to me, after she had got her job at Pacific Choice Seafood, that she was disappointed that she, that her work schedule didn't coincide with our work schedule because she didn't want to stop being part of our program. And that kind of says a lot to me when somebody's willing to take time out of their personal lives and want to be a part of us because of what we're doing and, you know, the projects we're doing and the way we're helping people on a day-to-day basis. And my last example, Shane. He came to us with a lot of experience in the trades. He brought with him, he brought with him a great attitude, an amazing work ethic, and a level of professionalism that is a real rarity in our program. Working with him motivated all of us. His teammates elevated their game, working faster and harder than, than they did before he was on our crew. He was only with us for a couple of weeks before he was snapped up by Danko Builders and, you know, he got put on one of their crews. Every one of us was thrilled when he got his job because he, we knew, you know, you can see when somebody really shines. And he was one of them. He came in there from day one, just setting the bar really high. And so we were all excited for him when he got his job and we were kind of bummed as well because, you know, it's, their, their, our loss was their gain, for sure. And I, and I talk about Shane because not all Helping Humboldt participants need to be in the program for an extended amount of time. Some people just need the financial support of G R just to get through the hiring process and on to their next job. And when fully engaged, we see a lot of growth in our participants. But that's, that's a big thing. They have to be engaged. And a lot of them are. After a short amount of time, they see, they get the feel of the program. Like I said, they feel safe and comfortable and, and that's integral for the growth, the growth process, I think. And when they do that, we're able to make recommendations to employers that help them secure jobs. And I'm proud and humbled to be a part of Helping Humboldt and a team that makes such major and positive changes in people's lives. Thanks for bringing us here today and let me talk to you.
Thanks, Julian. I also have Steve Brackenbury. He's one of the vocational counselors in the program. The vocational counselors monitor clients' progress for their program. They provide career planning, job search assistance, and supportive services as needed. So Steve wanted to share a couple thoughts he had too about his experience with the program.
Good morning. My name is Steve Brackenbury. I'm a vocational counselor. I need double glasses, so bear with me. It's, I can't see without it. Like many of you, I had the opportunity and privilege of being raised in a home where my mother was always waiting for me when I came home. My father worked long hours to provide for us. And every night, we sat around the dinner table and our, my parents listened to our hopes and dreams and they did their best to make them a reality. This resulted in me having the boots I needed to go out and walk into the world and the wherewithal to know how to pull up my bootstraps when things got tough. Many of our participants in our program are unable to pull themselves up by their bootstraps because they never had those boots to begin with or they lost them along the way. When they come into our program, they're resistant, defensive, riddled with anxieties. And my job, our job, is to hold hope for them when they cannot hold it for themselves. During our Helping Humboldt orientation, we tell them that we live by the golden rule: Treat others like you would want to be treated. And it works really well for us. Almost daily, I see their confidence begin to grow, often within the first few hours of being in the program. The woman who suddenly found herself homeless and she was sleeping in the trunk of her car at night for safety. The gentleman with special needs children who became addicted to drugs, fought his way back to sobriety but could not get work. The person stuck in generational poverty and welfare. The participants who are justice-involved and they've not worked at a paying job for years. So I would like to share some quotes from our participants. I asked them what they would say to you if they could be here and this is what they said. I don't have a video, but I'll do my best here. So these are actual quotes. "Julian and Noah's compassion have given me hope that there are those out there who care for our well-being. Without Helping Humboldt, I don't know what would have happened to me. I got the help to get my driver's license and a resume and I landed a job at Visiting Angels. This will change my life. I came the first day and was full of anxiety and I didn't want to be here. At the end of the day, I couldn't wait to come back. I have been involved in many programs and no one ever asked me what I wanted. This is the first time anyone has asked me what I cared about. The counselors are like a good dad that cares and holds me accountable." So I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity for all of us to be here today because I get the chance to tell you that every day in the program, I'm a witness to positive change, to our participants' courage, courage that is resilient and tenacious, and a witness to the changed lives that make our community stronger and better through the values and rewards of hard work and a job well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa, Julian, and Steve. Again, I cannot stress how important it has been to have a strong team working on this project. They bring the right measure of compassion, discipline, encouragement, and professionalism to bear. And we are really seeing some real outcomes. Because of the Helping Humboldt program and the enthusiasm of many of the participants, outcomes for the first year have been strong. We have found we are always able to get a participant employed as long as they engage and work the program. Here are some of our outcomes from the first year. 223 participants served, 26% of whom were homeless when they came to us. General relief recipients represent the majority of Helping Humboldt participants and we saw a 207% increase in G R client participation in employment activities because of the program. $52,000 of G R debt was discharged through the Helping Humboldt program and 52 clients entered and retained employment after 90 days. We measure success in numbers and percents. But it's important to remember we're working with fellow human beings who are often in crisis and largely have trouble getting or holding a job. The intensive and immersive assistance we provide is essential to the program's success. We also measure the program's success by its impact on the community. This is where self-esteem is truly built for these participants. With a work crew out in the community daily, our participants are seen doing hard work and getting compliments nearly everywhere they go. They are truly proud to give back and be of service. And this is a myth I want to kind of help dispel. The people we're working with truly do want to work. They just don't sometimes know how to get at it and this program's helping them with that. Here are the impacts of the program this first year. Just shy of a ton of trash and just over six tons of green waste disposed. 175 hypodermic needles removed from public spaces. Graffiti removed from five sites. 389 county cars washed and several community events supported. They have included cleaning and painting the bleachers at Redwood Acres, helping Redwood Coast Music Festival and Wolfstock with crews to set up and break down equipment and furniture. Connecticut Sculpture Waste where crews groom trails. The Senior Resource Center where the crews made hundreds of lunches for the summer backpack program. And as Julian referenced earlier, 1,500 emergency handbooks bound with six laminated pages each for the county staff. We also are seeing the crews learning a bit about horticulture where they're planting and propagating, propagating plants with North Coast Native Plants Society and the Potawat Village Community Garden. And they also help through the holidays always with a lot of the food events that go on. Last year, they helped with St. Vincent de Paul, Eureka Mission, and Arcata Community Center. The expansion into community events has exposed clients to several additional skills, including teamwork, deadlines, and engagement with the public. We are getting calls from more and more events and agencies right now as the word gets out to how effective these crews are in helping them with their events. We've been inspired by the program's progress in the first year and are looking to expand the skills we can offer to participants. To this end, we are beginning to develop a social enterprise second tier which will expose clients to the full gambit of production methods, advanced tool use, business practices, and customer service. On the slide are a few of the prototype products that represent the type of wooden home and garden items we're considering. These were made by Noah, one of our work crew leaders, who's also a carpenter. More on this endeavor to come soon. On behalf of my staff and in particular, the clients who we provide a lifeline to every day, I thank the Board for your time and interest in our program. We're happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
I want to thank the crew. You guys were out getting after the library on Friday, so. And that's made a big difference, so.
Yeah, the crew is there once, every week, right?
Yep.
At the library and it's made a huge impact.
Had a big crew out there Friday, so, thanks guys. Anyway, bring it back to the Board. I think everybody will probably have something to say. Virginia Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad you're here also because we've been hearing about it and trying to explain it to people and, you know, this is a really good reminder of what is happening. And I guess my question would be, what are we doing to let the community members who may be asking us questions know this? I mean, are we thinking of doing some types of, you know, PSAs or, you know, vignettes on TV? What is it that, that we do to really get people to know what's going on? Or how can we help make that?
Well, but I don't think anyone knows. It's just that they already are, but people are.
No, 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 I said, I think, I think if I understand the program, they're going to the areas where the people that need the help, if I'm.
Actually, I mean, I want community, okay, let me, maybe I should rephrase it. I want community members to know that good things are happening. Not the people who necessarily need the help, but the people who may be saying, these people don't do anything or people don't do anything. That's, I think some of that is out there. I just would like to see it more supercharged. And I think there's opportunities.
Understood.
And I understand what you're saying too. What we can do maybe is work with our public outreach at D H H S and see if we can get more word out about it. So we'll look at that. I agree with your need. Pardon?
We can help you too, I'm sure.
Okay, I'd love that.
Sarah Fennell?
Thank you very much. I mean, I kind of echo what Supervisor Bass was saying. A lot of times, we hear complaints and concerns about what is happening with that population of Humboldt County. And it's just so heartwarming to understand that there are opportunities out there if people are, will come to you. So I just wondered how they get to you is, I mean, how, how they become a part of it.
Well, currently, we're working with D H H S clients who are on benefited programs. Like I said, Cal Works, Welfare to Work, G R, Transitional Age Youth, and then we have a lot of the ex-offender population that we work with. We also get referrals from our SOS, the street outreach folks and different individuals who are working with the homeless can make referrals to us. So those are the ways right now that we're getting support. Because of our funding stream, we're not able to open this too broadly to the public at large. We're serving those individuals who have some sort of benefit and, and support through D H H S that allows us to spend our dollars on them.
I mean, that's fantastic because I know that there's probably an impression out there that people get money from Cal Works or G R or whatever and then just waste it. And this is a way for them to actually work with you to better their situation. It's just really good news. Thank you very much for letting us understand that this program in its infancy has already had such a great impact.
Thank you.
Sarah Fennell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, big kudos to all of you, all of the staff and the coworkers out there working on this program. Just a fantastic effort. And I have seen the success of these kinds of programs many times over the years. This is the newest reinvention of programs out of E T D. Back in the 90s and 2000s, when I worked at Redwood Community Action Agency, we were the employer of record, working with E T D and the Employment Development Department and retraining displaced mill workers, displaced forest workers. And that program also had great successes. I think we had about 50% placement of people into jobs after 90 days. And many of them went on to start their own businesses. Some of them started the Fire Safe Councils out in Ridgeville and other things. So really, great applause to all of you for the incredible work that you do for our community and thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I, I go back, Noah, the things you're building are, but if you, if you go back a little farther, we had a whole spectrum of people, different level of people called Redwood United that built planters and were pretty famous there for a while, all over the place. And they used a lot of the mill trimmings and things like that. And I still think there's a, there's a viable. You remember a few years Simpson Green Diamond was trying to get into the planter business for that reason and stuff. And people are looking for those kind of things. I thought the wine trellises, the wine vine trellises you were growing are absolutely gorgeous. So we have an abundance of redwood trimmings and things like that that can use on those, especially on those design planters. So stay after that. And then, and again, there are people looking for ground-level work. And the whole thing is you guys are teaching them to show up. I mean, the only thing they have to do is, you know, be able to pee in a bottle and show up at 8:00 in the morning with the right attitude. That's the only three things most employers want. They'll teach you everything else, but teaching those three things is, is something that you guys, I know, are pushing and realizing. And some of these people have reached that point where, I'm not going to make it doing this the rest of my life. I'm not getting any younger. So I appreciate everything you're doing. The offender program, I've worked with Connie on that quite a bit. We've got a couple of large employers that have been very accepting on that. And some of these people are first-time offenders that just made a mistake and want to get back on, get back on level. So thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Again, thanks for having us and I may be following up as we work on this social enterprise.
Don't hesitate.
Looking for help and maybe able to present in the future on that.
And I fully understand what Supervisor Bass and Fennell are talking about. We do get, what are you doing, what are you doing, what are you doing? And you guys are doing so much and this has been a discussion we've had for four or five years. Get the word out there of what you're doing. The successes are big. And, and, you know, we're not looking for more participants because you guys have a pretty good draft order of participants. You've got enough people that. But there's other places you can go, I mean, that, that can use your services which will allow you to further your programs and finance the program. So I think, I think all we're looking for is, you know, we, we catch hell all the time for everything that's going on, but when you're doing good stuff, throw the good stuff out there, you guys, because this is one of the good things. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Comment?
Well, Virginia and I, seven years, this is the best thing I've seen that you're doing. If, I'm, I'm being quite honest with you. Of all the projects you've had, this is the one that works and can make the difference. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You do need more participants in this. You need to hook it up with the employers. Just the saw shop I was talking about in Willow Creek has a young person working there. That person may train. So the word needs to get out to all the employers. This is a tool to put in their tool belt. Market this, that's what. Can you tell Noah that I've, I've, I collect wood? I've got a big pile of oak that I got that's perfect for cutting boards and projects and I'm happy to clear that space out and give it to him. He's been there for Omquist for like 15 years and needs a home, so. Perfect thing. Other people have all kinds of things that can be used, woodworking or other things. Let these people know, put this together. If you go down on Craigslist, the free stuff on there, there's stuff in there that, you know, you researched that. If someone was a hoarder or somebody who collected those things, could really make some neat projects. And I, I like to see that put together as far as that goes. I admitted to being a hoarder in here the other day and I hoard this wood for a reason. But I've always felt this kind of project, and I saw Connie Beck, your director, I've never seen her smile so much or so proud of a, of a project, especially after the. never seen her smile so much or so proud of a, of a project, especially after the first year. So I watch everything that happens in here, and justifiably so. The saying is what? And I probably will butcher this one, I'm not good at sayings, but if you teach a person, if you give a person a fish, they eat one meal. If you teach them how to fish, they eat for the rest of their lives. This is teaching the people how to eat for the rest of their lives. And it can make the biggest difference. Be the tip of the spear on this one. Get as much money and as much support from your departments, because it's going to save you 10 times on the other end of just plain and simply giving people fish for one meal. So, speaking for the public, vast majority of them, I would like to say thank you for this project, anything you can do to continue it, explode it. Do what you can here, because we're making a transition here between a prior business we've had. We used to do logging, we used to do pot, and there's all these people out here now, and they need this help desperately. Thank you.
Thank you. And do I need Noah's address, so we take all this used wood to your house? Just, we'll post it and everybody...
We'll give it to my car.
There you go. Thanks.
But we're also looking to have our own shop where we can store that wood.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
It's been... Mr. Matta?
It hasn't been moved yet, but I will move to, has it been moved?
No, no, no.
Okay. I didn't think so. I would move that we receive and file the presentation, and thank you very much.
Second.
We moved to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
I will say none. Thank you. Good job. Keep up the good work. And with that, nowhere near a record, but...
I think we need to have a feel-good presentation every time at every meeting.
We are...
Especially at the end.
We are adjourned.